So before we start, one, two, three, four.
Joan.
Well, this is, we're not voting anyway. Welcome to the January 10th meeting of the Planning Policy Commission. I want to, I originally wanted to say thank you. Oh, tonight, we're going to talk about, continue talking about the vision of the central area. I wanted to thank the scribe for doing such tremendous minutes from our last meeting. And with that, I'd like to look at the members of this commission and say, have you read the minutes and are you ready to vote? Does somebody have a, something to tell me?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Of?
Of?
November 30th.
Of November 30th.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't think I could do that because, can I? On this, tonight, I can approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Before we start discussion tonight, I know that Keith is ready to give us an update on everything we need to know to make a wise decision for creating this vision for the community. I want to remind everybody that we've spent the last year, well, before that, when I read the minutes, I realized that there were some people that had made comments about making sure that you had codes addressed before you could go into the vision. But if you remember, for the last year, we have been working on such things as heights and setbacks and schools and housing issues. So we have done all the hard work. I mean, some of that still has to be done, but the major part of it has been done. And what, what the city has done is started actually backwards. They have started with the underlings and then come back to do the vision. And normally, you do the vision first. So what the city has done is made our work just a little bit harder. So when Keith does his presentation, maybe you can remember all of the conditions that you put on, all of these things, so that when you can see the vision, you can correlate the two together. So with that, Keith, we're looking forward to your presentation. I know that I asked you guys to, to put together a list of all of the things that we suggested. You were probably going to do it anyway, but I'm hoping that all of the things that we've said in the last couple meetings that are now in a concise form, since you haven't updated the actual vision.
There's pressure. So first off, Happy New Year, everybody. Hopefully, everybody had a nice holidays and welcome to 2018. So this evening, we are revisiting the visions. We spent a number of meetings last year kind of walking through, changing the visions, making recommendations to changing the visions from what they are currently in the plan to something that would provide greater clarity and predictability for the community as well as the developers that are choosing to develop in Central Isaguá. So what, as, as, you know, when we, when we realized that we were coming back, you know, my thinking is because this is a topic that has no edges, it really doesn't, we could talk about this forever, frankly. And there is no right and wrong, there's just different opinions and different ways we can keep re-characterizing, I think, what we'd like Central Isaguá to be. And so what I thought was, let's, let's divide it into three, try and do this in three meetings, where we take kind of the introduction piece tonight, and then the next two meetings, we would spend on two neighborhoods each meeting, or two sub-districts each meeting. So I tried to kind of break it into smaller pieces so we could stay focused, because it's easy to get lost, is my take on this. So we have some different choices. And so I want to, before we jump into kind of talking about this, I want to make sure we're all pointed in the same direction. And so what we have as a base document is something that we spent a number of meetings on last year. It is a product of basically a year-long public outreach, where we had neighborhood meetings, we had focus groups, we came to PPC early on, and you guys put some preferences on boards, and then ultimately, we started drafting language. And as we worked through that with you guys last year, we came up with kind of a current structure. And before we start wordsmithing, I think the question for you all is, the structure that we have in place, are we moving forward with that? And if so, then yeah, let's start talking about the comments we heard at council committee and what are we going to do with those? That's one pathway we could go down. A different pathway is, no, the structure is not what we wanted it to be. Frankly, it was flawed and we should start at square one, you know, re-discussing what these visions, what the content should be and how to put that together. What I would say, though, is I'm going to let you guys hopefully choose which pathway you want to go down before we start. My only hope is that whatever pathway we go down, that we can get to an end point in the first quarter of this year. I think that, you know, the commitment that I heard from the council was, send it back to PPC. You know, three meetings seem like a reasonable amount of time. So the hope is that whatever direction we want to go, that, you know, basically, three months worth, two to three months, we should be done. Now, if that means I'm willing to meet here, I'm actually here every night anyway, so if we want to talk about this nightly, I'm, I'm good with that. But I think part of, before we get kind of started, is, is just having a very high conversation about the document that we took forward to council in December, is that, is that the starting spot? Should we start there? Do we feel like we had productive conversations in 2017 and that that, even though we all agree it wasn't a finished document, is that a good starting spot for a 2018 conversation? So that's, I think, question number one.
But you want an answer for?
I would, I am, I am waiting for an answer. So, you know, I think, I think the question is, do we start where we, where we left off? Or do we want to start in a new space?
I guess you could say there's two different ways you could slice that. You could take attribute, you could start over from scratch and take attributes, chunks, and say, this is a great piece, let's put this in here, let's put this in here, and kind of create a new structure using what we have, right?
Yep.
So, or we try and make these work. And I don't, I think it might actually be faster to do it the other way, more faster, more efficient than trying to debug what we already have. Just thought. I mean, that's how I work. When I come up with a problem that isn't moving forward, I don't necessarily start from scratch, I just reformat or restructure the document, the plan, and then I take what I've already thought and start saying, this is a good piece, let's put this over here and let's put this over here. So, thinking from an efficiency standpoint.
So, does it really make any difference if this section is before this section? Does it really make a difference to the overall plan?
No.
Okay, so what you just said, you just said no to?
Structure. How things are structured together.
Okay, start, start with the beginning. What is in there, in the plan now? Is it bad? Is it wrong? Can it be improved on or is nothing in it of value?
I think it can be improved upon.
Okay, improved upon is not starting from scratch?
No, I'm not saying start from scratch, I'm saying, there's two different ways, okay, how do I say this? Organizationally, you can start from scratch. And then, because the way we think, organize, how we organize it might be important for how we process things. So going from, we're going to look at this chapter, we're going to, we're going to look at the valley, the valley vision, and we're going to move over to...
But isn't the vision itself more important than how it's put together?
Yes.
So if you spend, if you start from scratch and end up spending six or seven meetings on it, because we're not going to agree on this here and this here, but no, we want it changed, the structure of it, isn't it more important to this point in time to get on and actually get on with the city, get on with the building, get on with the vision, than worrying about the structure? So I'll come back to my original question. Is what is in there now sufficient? Do we cover all the bases? Is, I mean, I know that we needed more wildlife and protection of streams, I know, but that's in there now. What else do we have to put in there to make it work?
I see, two things are, I think, are pretty big.
But does anybody else have any comments?
I think that it is a good starting place, because I think we have put a lot of time into the structure. And for me, I, I like the developer, the developer section, the city section, and the what success looks like, I like those, because I think it clearly lays out where we want to go. I do have some small, smaller things, but I think, I think it's a good starting place.
Yeah, and I would just add, I think if we were going to go back to square one, that means really going back to square one and going out to the community again and doing everything that we did last year. And I feel like all of that has ended up in a, in a good place, structurally. I mean, I feel good about that, so.
So one thing I would, that I do think is missing, but I think is, is again, correctable from this as a starting point, is that I looked in earlier versions and I think that in a vision, some illustrations of what we mean, for example, by a human-sized grid, those sorts of things, that they could benefit from some actual photos. And those, there were some images in earlier versions of the vision. So that is one thing that I think is missing right now. We really have, I think, a good, I think we have a good starting place from the verbiage, but we are missing those pictures, which I think could, could really bring some of the verbiage to life.
Althea?
So I actually agree that the structure is good. What, so I, but I do have feedback on the, and we can talk about this a little bit later, on, kind of, the, the words are a little too soft. I think they have to be much more actionable and, and I guess you have to put regulations behind them. Also, in terms of the measures of success, I think we need to talk a lot more about how success is actually defined, because things like, you know, wildlife corridors are identified and protected, what does that mean? I mean, it means, protected could mean different things to different people. So, you know, those kind of things, I think, that we have to, to change, but I think that the structure, I agree with.
I think that if we do separate into three meetings and take each district separately, I think we're going to come up with some better ideas. And I have a couple little, little things in each one of them, too, that, that would be, to me, would be more vision statement. But basically, I think we need to get on with the discussion and, and see where you want us to go here.
Okay, so let's, let's start there. I think there's a lot of refinement that will come out of these meetings, whether it's three or four that we end up having. So I'm absolutely good with that. And you guys, as you think of things along the way, even if we're, they're kind of like, we're going to do it next time or something, or we did it last time, feel free to let me know, because I'm taking notes and we will get all that stuff cranked into iterative versions as we move along.
Keith, I would ask one thing, though, which I think is, is giving me heartburn on what you have here.
Yeah.
Is, we make these suggestions, but they're not incorporated necessarily into what we get. So I'm hoping that as we make some suggestions tonight, they can be incorporated so that we can see the final, if you want to say, the final product.
You will, you will have, my intent would be, you would get updates before the next meeting. So the next packet before we, not for tomorrow.
I was hoping you'd say that.
But for the next, the next agenda, when we talk about visions again, whatever we talk about tonight, will get incorporated into a red line of the previous version.
Okay, it has to be that way, because we can't, can't go back and forth.
No, absolutely. So we'll spend a little bit of time, I think, looking in the rearview mirror, looking at the red lines, and see if we captured your guys' comments. And then we'll focus on the next segment. So that's the way I envision this going down.
I don't know if you were planning on talking about this, but I would like to review the, the code part, the enforceable by code, because that was something that was new to me, that was brought up at the Land and Shore. And I think that is a really important thing for us to discuss, because it changes the context of the whole vision. So if we could review that, I would appreciate that.
Yes.
I have a question, too. So we went through all of those site, just height restrictions and, and all the things that we've done the last year. So if, when we finish this and it goes to council and it's approved, and I know it will be approved, does it, you know, most of that stuff is now basically code, because that's what you're going to be working under when somebody comes in to ask for permits. So do you have to go back, how long is it going to take you to go back and actually put it into code language so that somebody can say, hey, this is code?
So that's a, that's a big fork in the road.
Right.
And we need to have a conversation, this is, I think, what Vicki was after just a second ago. There's, there's two ways we can do this. One is, we can leave the visions as basically kind of like policy direction. You know, here's, here's what we want for our city. And then you have to actually then add code section to put, to make those connections between the visions and what the regulations say people actually have to do. That's one choice. The other choice, and this is the piece that, this is the pathway that I chose last year, and I, it, we could go either way, so I don't think there's a right and wrong answer. The other way is, you change the applicability section in the code to say, and you have to comply with the visions. So this gets to Althea's point earlier, and that is, if the language in the visions is clear, then you can use that as regulation, even though it's basically more like policy. So as long as it's clear, then the city can say, look, here's what the vision says for this neighborhood, you have to do this. And even though it's not in the code section, it's in the, the plan, it can be implemented with the right connector. And, and that's the, the piece that we put into the applicability section. We can go either way. So either one, but we have to, that's a, like I said, it is a fork in the road. We should decide, because either one, we're going to spend a lot of time on that language to make it clearly implementable, or we leave it broader, and there's going to be a follow-up code section that's going to have to come later this year.
And it would come back to us, too?
Code would come back to you.
Okay. I would like to see actual code. So when a developer comes in or a builder comes in, they can say, this is it. It's, that's too, too aspirational over there. I want code, I want to see it in writing, that this is what I have to do. I don't want to change, I want to, well, gee, it's aspirational and it could be this or that could be that, but this states it specifically. So I, I would hope, my recommendation would say, come back and do it in code.
So we should, so we'll have, there's pros and cons.
True.
And so I've worked in permitting for a long time. And permitting is black and white, right? Setbacks are 25 feet, so no ifs, sands, or buts. If you don't like that, you can apply for variance, right? But otherwise, you do that. The problem is, with vision stuff, to turn that into code, you cannot imagine every scenario that you're possibly going to have. There's too many different variables out there in property and setbacks and everything else. And so what it does by keeping it in the vision section, and I'm not plugging one or the other, is it gives the city the ability, it, it gives you some performance standards. So in other words, it says, you have to do this, but there might be two or three different ways to get there, right? And an individual property owner in the city can work through that and, and get compliance. So the compliance isn't optional, but how you get there, there might be some variety in how you get there.
Which is same as asking for a variance.
It is not. It's actually not. So, so we'll talk about that at some point.
Let's get back to what we're supposed to talk about.
Let's, let's stay on topic for a little while. All right, so let's, so, so let's, let's go ahead, I mean, does anybody else want to talk about structure choices before we dive into the council committee comments? Which I actually thought most of them were really good. I think we just have to talk them through and decide what we want to do with them.
So you guys are sitting at the table, and when we're done, and when Keith says, does anybody else want to make any comments? You're certainly welcome to, to make your ideas known, so that's why you're here.
Yeah, before we move forward, can we make a decision? Are we keeping the structure?
Well, I've had three people that said yes.
I just want to make a definitive.
Yeah.
When we move forward, we check a box. So I thought, I'd like to check boxes tonight.
I don't think we have to make a motion on it, but...
No, just a collaborative decision.
I think it's an agreement that we're going to continue on the way we are.
I think so, yep.
Yes.
Don't fight over the microphone.
So on, on the structure, I guess...
Only the structure, so...
I get, on the structure, that's all I was going to talk about, the structure part. It seems like needed some, to me, needed some further depth on defining housing and restricting housing types to same type of housing types in that area. So from a structure part, I think...
That's the structure.
John?
Guard.
Structure, third.
I guess I was seeing it as a structure. I wasn't going to talk about that piece, but as a structure where you talk about it, not so much in each neighborhood.
Okay.
But the concept of designing housing, so similar housing type stock goes into existing same stock. That's a structure that applies to all neighborhoods. Maybe you don't put a condo right next to a house, or you don't put a townhouse to stand alone.
That's the structure of each individual district. We're talking about how to present the whole statement. There's a difference in, I think, the way we're communicating to one another.
Organization of thought.
So Steve, let me, because I know where you're at. So on, if we, if we keep the structure and then we start looking at the document, the first couple items from the council committee's list deal with the guiding principles. You're in the guiding principles right now. And I think your comment about that, as it relates to the housing guiding principle, why don't you save it for then?
Okay.
Because I think we're going to talk about jobs in the guiding principles, and we're also talking about the main vision statement. So, so I think just maybe a little bit of pause on that one.
I was, I was going to be high level on all these. The next was the environment, and the concern I have is, Isaguá talks about having a 51% tree canopy going forward, and I don't know how, how that's going to be held in context with the green necklace concept. I want to see that get flushed out further as well, in much more depth. And the other was economic vitality, jobs. Again, the same thing, what's the balance? We have a measure of, a method of measuring our economic success. I don't know if we have a measure for, measuring whether or not we're...
No, but we will definitely talk about every one of those issues.
Okay, those are my thoughts at a high level.
Tony?
I just have a clarification. When you talk about structure, we are talking about the structure of, starting with the Central Isaguá Plan, the planned vision, and then all of the language that goes down into it as being part of the structure, right? Because in a few meetings ago, there was some talk of splitting that out into a different place.
Right.
And, okay, so that's staying, staying in and then the rest goes on.
So, so there was some comments out of the committee about the need for change section. So if we're keeping the same structure, then we're going to have a conversation about that one section of the structure and where, whether it lives or not, or morphs into something else, that will definitely be part of the conversation.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood that all of that language at the front was part of the structure.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Keith, what's your opinion?
On structure?
Yes.
So, so what's the goal? And, and so sometimes, for me, it's important, what are we, what are we trying to do? What are we trying to achieve? And what I believe we're trying to achieve is, we're trying to put some more clarity on the visions for Central Isaguá. We, we decided that, that maybe the first projects that came through the, the turnstile didn't quite meet our expectations. And so one way to improve predictability is to provide a greater level of detail. And so I believe that this document will do that. I don't think that there is a way we can anticipate every development project that's coming through and get this perfect. But I believe that between the revision to the visions, as well as the codes that Joan talked about earlier, I think the city is going to be in a much better place for the next wave of development that comes through the door. So is this, is this, I think this will get us there. I think there's a lot of wordsmithing still to do, to make it clear, because what might be clear for me and what might be clear for you might be completely different things. And the task at hand is to write something that's clear for everybody, so that there's little ambiguity, because the more ambiguity there is, the more people bring their lawyers to the city and, and try and prove that they're right. And that's not where I want to go. So, so do I think that we're on the right track? I do think we're on the right track. I think this document is a lot more predictable than the one we had previously, and a lot clearer of what everybody's responsibilities are. And talking about just measuring success, Althea, I think that's a huge piece, and I think you guys spent a lot of time talking about that that was a necessary component to this. So I drunk the Kool-Aid, I guess. I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. I think this has some more work to do. But I think, I think if we kind of focus and talk about it, I think we're going to get there. I really do.
Carl, any thoughts?
I have thoughts.
Okay, so let's, let's get on with this.
All right. Okay, so we're starting page one. There were comments about, so, so for me, I'm going to, I'm going to try and be as focused as I can. So, so our task was to update the visions. Some of these first comments are really more about the main vision of the plan and the guiding principles, which I wasn't necessarily assuming was part of our scope, but it became our scope. So it's, it's part of, I think it's, it's open for conversation at this point. You know, when you read the main vision statement, which listed on the top of page one, I'll go down. So Central Isaguá vision, guide the evolution of Central Isaguá from a place known primarily for strip malls and office buildings into a more cohesive neighborhood that is widely recognized as a vibrant and livable town center by, and then there's the rest. So there were comments about that statement not being aspirational enough, and also being kind of pointing at a negative of our city. And so, so there was at least some comment from Land and Shore that this particular piece needed to get some work. Now, I haven't put any time into that, I haven't, so, so although I would have, I'd love to say that from Land and Shore till now, I haven't done any work and I got to spend a lot of time on the beach somewhere, that's not true. I actually didn't start wordsmithing this, because I wanted to make sure we were in agreement that things that we agreed with the committee. So first question is, do you guys agree with the committee? Is this, is this statement not where we want it to be?
Yes.
Okay, so great. So that's a yes on the first one. Okay, so...
I would like to ask the commissioners, I don't think we have time to all agree on another vision statement. I think we could go around in circles for six months and not come up with something. So what I'd like to do... come up with something. So what I'd like to do is ask you to go home and think about it, and come up with something, so that when we come back in the next meeting...
We have some choices.
We have some choices...
That'd be great.
...to put up there and kind of look at.
Super great.
I think it's an awesome idea.
Okay, so we're all going to take a whack at this intro to the main guiding principles. I think that's great. And I know that council member Winterstein also said he had worked on that a little bit, and I reached out to him and asked for him to share, and he is, he said he wanted to meet. So we're going to do that, I think, early next week. So by the time you guys get the next version, if he's got some suggestions, I will make sure you guys have that to consider as well.
And they're suggestions.
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 They're just suggestions.
So we all have to agree on it. So, okay.
Yep. All right.
Can I make one suggestion now? So I was one of the people who I strongly feel that this does not have the sense of pride that we want to start a vision with. And I think, though, if we just remove, this is a suggestion, if we remove the clause in the middle about a place known primarily for strip malls and office buildings. So if we say, guide the evolution of Central Izua into a more cohesive neighborhood that is widely recognized as a vibrant and livable town center by, and then the principles, I think that that could be a workable solution, because I just don't like that one center part.
That's a good start. And it could be the one that we all agree on, but let's all still give us, take that, and see if we can move forward. I just don't want to spend a lot of time on that particular thing when we have to look at so many other things.
Yep. Yes. Okay. Because I already know what's going to take most of our conversation, and that's this necklace thing. So, okay, so Steve brought up some points, and so now we're into, we're into the actual guiding principles. And, you know, the thing about this, to me, Tricia and I were talking about this, I think Kristen, you might have been there, although it's hard for me to remember these days. You know, part of this is, things change, right? When this plan was being put together, there was no housing in Central Izua at all. Nobody was even talking about building housing in Central Izua. The city knew it needed housing, you know, to go with all the jobs, and so there was a huge focus on housing. So when we say, well, where's the jobs? It's like, well, you know, back when the plan was being put together, it was kind of just assumed the jobs were going to be here, but, you know, clearly times change. And now all of a sudden, you get housing, and people start worrying about the jobs, and it's like, where's the jobs? And so it's just a product of, this thing is a fluid thing. Even though you do these plans that are for a long time, things change, people's perspectives change, priorities change, and sometimes it's worthwhile going back and looking and saying, why did we write it that way? Why didn't we include these other things? And so I think it's a great time for us to say, let's talk about what's not there, what might should be there. So Steve, you had talked about both, an amendment to the housing and environment earlier. Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
This concept.
Okay. So on your point on housing, I don't want to, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I don't want to paraphrase what you said, but what I think you were getting to was that there needs to be some consistency in housing in neighborhoods. Was it, so you want to kind of go with that a little bit and kind of see if there's any support from others to try and change that?
I think that is a good summary. I think, at least in some neighborhoods where it's traditional housing, that stock of existing housing needs to be maintained in style and type, not do things like combining lots and to allow larger style houses or larger height houses than are consistent with the neighborhood. That's my intent, housing. I guess I would also look at coding that allows more condominiums or style housing instead of apartment-style complexes, which seems to be the place that we're going. And I'd like to know if there's some way or code that allows for, or prevents, or just opens the floodgates to all kinds of apartment complexes, which I think bring a different character and style of a community than does having folks who own the residence.
I think every city right now would love to have condominiums and not apartments, but since they can't, since the builders aren't going to build it under the liability that is now put upon them, they're not going to come. I know that there are other cities that are facing the same problems that have joined together with other groups to lobby the legislature to remove the restrictions that are now on it. And from what I heard at the economic breakfast last week, I think there are several legislators on both sides of the aisle that are willing to look at this and understand that it's a problem for all the cities to get condos. And the only thing that I would say about this housing thing here is, I think we need to add somewhere, when you have a variety of types, you should have owned and owner occupied. I don't know how you would put that in there, but it's coming. And I would expect that it would be a lot of discussion in the next legislative system. It's only 60 days, so I don't know what's going to come about it, but that's one of the big issues that I know the realtors are on board with it, and a few other cities. So it's extremely important to put in there.
So, yeah, I mean, right now, realtors, master builders, cities, Izua, Everett, Renton, so everybody's lobbying Olympia right now to support some sort of legislative action that would remove that liability issue, which is basically keeping builders from building condominiums. So this is a, this is a regional problem, and unfortunately, until it changes, you will not get condominiums in Izua because of the liability risk and the associated cost to mitigate that risk that comes with that. But there is significant effort right now being followed to try and change that.
So can we prevent or downzone to prevent apartment complexes?
This is not a zoning activity. This is a visioning activity.
I'm asking for, I realize you're not a lawyer, and I don't play one on TV either, but from, is there a way the city can say, we're...
Sure. We control zoning. So the city council, the city council could zone property to make it only allowable for single-family homes. I don't think that's consistent with the vision conversations we're having.
So can I ask a kind of a larger question here? So what are we trying to accomplish when saying that we want condos as opposed to apartments? I mean, what is the driving need for that? I mean, so, you know, condos provide housing to a certain set of people. Renters are a different set of people. Now, you want a whole combination of those. So if we're trying to build more condos, what is the greater need that we're trying to accomplish by saying that we want condos? I'm not quite, I wasn't quite getting that from the conversation.
Can I answer that?
So I guess what I'm trying to address is, I think you get a community where people live, work, play, go to school, all those things. You get a different economic vitality out of people who own their residence and take pride in their ownership versus people who might be renters and care more for the community. That's what I'm attempting to drive by having a method of ownership as being a preferred method of desired residency rather than apartment complex owners.
So then in the, in the grand scheme of things, are we saying that, you know, so this is a very pretty expensive part of town, right? And so we're saying that people are not as valued because they cannot afford to buy property?
I'm not looking at it as a attempt to drive or determine or ascertain the value of a person. A person still has value regardless. I'm not trying to have that conversation.
So I get your point. I actually support your point. So this is, this is a thing where we can go down a rabbit hole really fast. I think Steve has made a suggestion that we put some language in here. I think Joan has made a suggestion. What I'm looking for is, does anybody else other than Joan support her proposal? And does anybody other than Steve support his proposal? And then I think we should move on.
I think it's basically the same.
I'm not sure what was the proposal again. I mean, exactly, I don't, I don't get the exact...
So there was, there was basically, you know, to, and I don't know what the exact words are, we'll work on that. And we can do that as a red line, and then you guys can look at and see if you like it. It was to put some language in there about, you know, I would, I would, so the word in here is variety. Maybe it should be diversity. I heard ownership and rental being somewhere mentioned in that. We can put that in and see what it looks like, and then we can have a bigger conversation about whether we support that as an edit or not, rather than spending a ton of time debating that tonight.
It doesn't say that it has to be one or the other in the way of what comes in and being built, but I think that having language in there that just says that we, you know, want all different types of housing gives the city a better flavor, a better, I don't know, a mixture of people who come in here and stay for many years and make the city their own, that join boards and commissions and are actually part of the city. But I think that this is a vision statement, so we can, you know, our vision is to have a mixture of both of them, and at some point in time, we'll be able to do that.
Actually, I have a suggestion for that. And when we talked about jobs, I was just thinking jobs, housing, it has to support the economic vitality and the innovation. And if you don't have all of those support each other, then just having them in random pockets doesn't seem to make any sense to me. I mean, that's, that's my opinion. It's if you're trying to get to a certain place, the jobs, the housing, everything has to fit together.
Sounds like two different conversations, or two very different topics. Owner occupancy ratio, which is one, because that's the legality of, who's living here, renters versus owners. And then you have the diversified portfolio of properties. So the vision statement should probably cover both those. Do we want to stipulate a ratio of owner occupancy?
No.
We can't...
That was a question for everybody else, not me.
So the hard thing is, as government, we live in a capitalist country, last I checked. You know, it's very property rights oriented. We can't mandate ownership or rental. So you can, you can allow for a certain height, a certain density, but legally, we can't say you can only put ownership housing there. The property owner has the right to build, you know, rental, ownership, co-op, if that's allowed by code. So us trying to prescribe an ideal ratio, one, it's hard to implement, but two, I don't know what success would be, you know, because it, you will get into a serious debate about equity and diversity and, you know, what income level our jobs are here, and it starts to unravel really quickly.
Okay. And I have a question about condos while we're on that topic. If we have a high-rise building that's not apartments, and it would become condos, right?
If it's residential.
If it's residential. So aren't we actually already going to get that?
Right now, right now, if you get a multi-story residential building, it will be apartments. Or it'll be a hotel, if you consider that residential. I don't, but it would be. So if a builder, so right now, a builder has a choice of building condominiums for sale units or rental units. And the reason why they're choosing to, in our economy, Seattle is different, downtown Bellevue is a little bit different, but for us, right now, the added cost to get the protection from the lawsuits, so what happens is, there's a whole group of lawyers out there that chase condominium construction, and there's a certain time limit for liability of construction defects. And what happens is, if you build condominiums, you will be sued for some sort of construction defect because there's money to be made to do that. And it's just, and until we change the legislation that gives some protection to builders for that purpose, people will not build condominiums here, because what you have to do is you have to buy an insurance policy that protects you against that liability risk. And so you're building the same product, basically, and you're having to pay to not get sued or to cover your assets when you do get sued. And most builders will say, it's not worth it. That, the money doesn't work. So I'm just going to build an apartment, and that's why apartments are getting built right now here.
So if Raleigh was to develop their properties today and go with the maximum size and say, we're going to, you know, go with a one-story building?
Yep.
And it would be apartments by default?
I would let Carrie answer that question.
I don't want to build a new condominium until the law has changed.
Okay.
Because you will get sued. It's a horrible emotional experience, and the system is not set up for people who want to do the right thing.
I didn't realize that.
Well, you go one step further. If there is a problem of a minor plumbing issue...
That's enough.
They can, the builder can, cannot come back and fix it.
Right.
The homeowners are required to sue instead of fixing some little feature. And any builder who builds a new home, no matter how expensive the home is, there's going to be something that isn't quite right. The corner isn't, you know, 45-degree or 90-degree angle, and they can't come back and fix it. They have to be sued. And so until that's changed, it's going to be very difficult.
Okay, so understanding the legalese and the reasons why you'd want apartments over condos, is there a difference between construction quality of a condo versus apartment, or are they the same? And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because many years ago, during the real estate boom, everybody was doing condo conversions.
Right.
Converting apartments. They were always apartments. They never were intended to be condos. So in today's market, if someone was to build an apartment complex, is it actually really, I mean, if someone chose to go down the route of a condominium versus apartment complex, is it really the same building? Or are there different quality or different?
The codes are the same, and it really depends on the builder.
On the finishes, because it's going to depend on what they think they can get for rent. And, you know, if they, if they consider it a luxury market, they'll up the finishes, because then they'll be able to get the rents to justify that.
The same code?
Same code.
To build the building?
Yeah.
Oh, I had no idea. This is a complete revelation to me, so it's awesome.
Mary?
Something a little bit different, but still staying with housing. Where we talk in, I think the business is all trying to keep existing businesses, especially since we've still got Confluence area in here, which does have existing housing, which I think a lot of that is the lower income, and I wouldn't even consider it affordable, because by, you know, the current definition of affordable, most of those are low income. I would like to see maybe some statement in there to try and also with the housing is make sure going forward, we can keep our existing housing, you know, our existing citizens that are there and not displace them. Because that's the other thing that's really happening with Seattle, is all their low-rent apartments and hotels are being torn down, and none are being built. So that's one of the reasons why there's so much homeless. And if we do that here, if those turn into high-rise or, you know, expensive apartments, where are those people in there right now going to go? So some sort of, you know, sustainability with existing people in our housing, I think we need to have a statement in there.
I could just add, I think with the, with the housing, I mean, I agree with what everybody's saying, but I think from a vision, like from, for the vision, I mean, really, what, maybe what, the words we need to think about are, like, why do we want, you know, condos instead of apartments or whatever it is? What are the outcomes? And it's, I mean, we want to facilitate investment in the community or whatever it is, whatever those words are. And I think that's, it gets a little fuzzy, but in the vision statement, I mean, that's, that's, that's why we want that. We don't want to say in the vision, we want, you know, owner occupied or whatever, but we want people to invest, live a long time and invest in the community. And we have a lot of that in there already. I mean, you know, all stages of life and varieties and words like that, which are all good, I think. The details can then come later. The details can then, can then come later, either in the neighborhoods, or even in code, or whatever. But, but that's just my, my perspective, just reminding us, this is a vision and not, you know, that detailed.
I don't agree with any of y'all. The reason that we added central, housing to Central Issaquah is because it was a monoculture of businesses, and adding housing was going to create the vitality and the 24-hour occupancy that was going to make it exciting and active and urban and energized. And this statement provides no pathway to success of gaining that. This just talks about, yeah, you know, we're going to grind through and make sure that we have housing for all kinds of people. It doesn't talk about why you're putting the housing in the particular areas to get the success of each neighborhood, to make it individual and better, right? And I would like to see some language in there, talking more about the appropriateness of the housing per neighborhood and its reason for being. And the variety, this is almost a detail to me. It's not a vision.
So would you add that to the districts, when we get into the districts and?
No, because it's the overarching reason for having housing in the vision. It's not each detailed thing. It's more about, and the central is, you know, we are adding housing to the area to increase the vitality, make it 24 hours, add a variety of interest, or whatever, you know, the, the words are that people think are appropriate for what you envision in all of Central Issaquah, to make people want to take the train in and go to Issaquah and live there, because they can walk out their door, and they can go to a restaurant, and they can work just down the way. And you don't have to have a car, and it's transformative, right? You're going from suburban, car-oriented strip malls to a whole different way of living. And by saying you're just dealing with a variety of housing methods, I think is, is that, that would be in each district vision. What kind of housing variety do you perceive in that?
So Connie, sorry?
Go ahead.
So do you have a draft you would like to share of a vision?
I'll, I can make one. Not right now.
Because I agree with you on the, on this, it looks more like a mission statement. Here's how we're trying to get to our vision, but we don't know what the vision is. So I agree with you.
If I could add a comment, one of the things that surprised me about this vision document is there's no mention in here anywhere of the Cascade Agenda, which is really the whole point of the Central Issaquah replanning effort. That's what we're trying to achieve. We are not only a Cascade Agenda city, but we are a Cascade Agenda leadership city. And there's just a handful of those in the state. And yet, in our vision, we don't even mention it.
I think that's the question. What is that?
Well, it's, it's in the introduction of the plan. All the pieces, all the, sort of, the, the anchor pieces, and one of them is Cascade, one of them is Mountain de Soun, the GMA target. So we went through all of that and then said, and this is our reaction to that, is we're trying to put it in the central plan. But, but point well taken, it's not actually in the vision.
It feels like it should, it belongs in here, and it essentially is a vision that was put forth by Forterra. It's a different way of growing. You know, Issaquah has grown as a suburban community around the car. We are constrained geographically by mountains and a lake, and frankly, we've run out of room to build. And if we don't change the way we build, we're going to go right up the green hillsides that define the brand and the character of our community. So we have to have this conversation with our community about building in a different way and embracing density in our urban areas, our urban cores, in a thoughtful way that still preserves the character of our town, but saves the open space that we all value so, so greatly. And so there's a website, and it goes into great detail about what that Cascade.
I've got homework to do. Thank you. I had no idea.
So didn't we have a discussion at one point in time about, in the beginning, having a aspirational wording of why we're doing this, so that we can explain exactly why we're doing it, why we have to do it, you know, why we should be doing it? Wasn't there some kind of a statement that should be in there somewhere to address some of the things that have just been said?
In the plan? Why we're doing the central plan originally? Or why we're changing the vision?
It's probably why we're doing it in the first place, why we're creating the plan and adding more housing and more stuff to the central area. We, didn't we discuss how we put together?
It's all in the introduction. All the pieces are in the introduction, how we went through all the pieces of that. We could make it stronger if, if it's not.
I think that that was one of the things that was talked about, that it should be stronger and, and more up-to-date of why we're doing this. People don't understand, when they wake up the next morning and there's a 12-story building next to them, they want to know what value that is.
We could send that around as another homework item for everyone to read the intro, and see if it needs to be stronger, if there needs to, if things need to be phrased in a different way.
I think it needs to be somewhere where, whether, I mean, somewhere ahead of this.
Right.
So, yeah.
Do folks agree with that? Or is that past the scope?
I agree.
I think that that would be a better, a better introduction. I think that the need for change is a bit too much. I mean, it's very germane to the conversations we're having right now, but for an average reader who wants to know what the vision's about, it's, it's very particular to our specific conversations. But I think we would be better served by having a more general motivation for the whole document in place of this. And maybe one statement about how it changed.
Well, that should be updated.
Let me talk about that next. So, so let's, there's.
I'm on the same page, it's just not in the same order.
I think, so, there needs to be a little bit of tweaking on the economic vitality piece. I think it needs to be specific about jobs, and jobs as it relates to the housing that's being provided. Steve, what was your point on environment? I lost that one. Do you want to still make that, or did you give it up?
I guess my point is, Issaquah talks about a 51% tree canopy retention. And I don't see how we can develop the Central Issaquah Plan and retain a 50% tree canopy. Those things are in conflict. So what's the balance between being known as a city, a Tree City USA since 1992? The banner's no longer up there. I was pointing at it. And this concept of a green necklace. Are we forsaking, or basically saying, for all intents, we're not going to be a 51% tree canopy city anymore? Is that what we really want? That's part of it. I think, we kind of talked about wildlife corridors, but I think of things like the Bergsma property, and whether or not we should be building on steep slopes. Or do we have city code that says we can't build in a place like that? I also think of, let's say, the Kalkari property, where, and I don't know the city code, but when that came up, that allows you, the city requires a waiver if you build within 50% of a steep slope. Maybe that's a code that I think is prime for review, of whether or not that's a good thing or not, or we should look at that type of code. So that's kind of my concern about environment.
I think Connie made a good point. I, I like the fact that it's more, there's more in there, not only in housing, but in the environment, to say more about what's going on and why you're doing it.
Well, so part of it is, you know, we started talking, I mean, it came up a lot during the conversations about the green necklace, where, you know, you're increasing density, you're increasing kind of the urban nature of the city within this district. And so what's the importance of the environment in that? And I think it's very important. And so it becomes, you know, the, the harder the area gets, the more important the green spaces become. Because, you know, now all of a sudden, your only access to maybe something natural is a riparian corridor. And so that becomes super important, because you don't have a green yard, because you live in an apartment building, or maybe a condo, if the liability legislation goes through. So, so that, that's not what this says. And I think if, if really, we're going to look at this as, what is the reason for these things as being important in Central Issaquah, akin to the housing, and if we look at all of these with that lens, then I think you would redraft the environment piece to talk about the value of the environment in an urbanizing setting, because it has a different role than say up on Squawk, where everybody has a big forested backyard, right? So I think we can look at that. And I, you know, the tree canopy piece, Steve, just to go there, is, it's a citywide aspiration, which means that there'll be some areas that don't have 51%, and then there's other areas that are 100%, because we preserve them as permanent open space. So it, it's, it's an overall city calculus, and not a parcel-by-parcel calculus.
I fully agree with that, Keith. It just seems that right now, as of 2006, we're only at 51% overall citywide. I don't see how we can take out trees in the Central Issaquah Plan and stay above 51%.
Unless we plant trees. So it's, I, I get your point. And let's take a, let's take a draft at this, and we'll bring you guys back a red line of this section next time. Sir, are we?
Could I say one, one quick clarification? On the, on the summary from Land and Shore?
Yeah.
The schools piece, was that a recommendation to add a schools section? I mean, a statement?
So, so this, this had many tentacles.
Well, if you don't want to dig.
No, 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 no. So we'll unpack it. So, right now, if you, when you get into the sub-district conversations, the only one where schools really comes up is Confluence. And part of it is because of proximity to Issaquah Valley, and then the future middle school site. And so there was some, some dialogue in that neighborhood description about that that's one of the assets of that neighborhood. And so part of the conversation is, you know, if we're going to add, you know, the, the target is another, you know, it's 7,000 housing units in the regional growth center. You know, right now, you can look at Issaquah Highlands, and if you use that as a metric and say, okay, you know, 4,500 housing units generates the need for two elementary schools, you know, you start to say, okay, well, if you're going to put 7,000 housing units in, how many elementary schools do you need? And where are you going to put them? And if your plan doesn't talk about schools, it seems like that's maybe a missed opportunity. So, so there was that whole conversation about, do we need to populate a school conversation in each of these sub-districts to really turn them into neighborhoods? Because everybody wants to have a school in their neighborhood, right? I did. I grew up next to my elementary school. So, so that's part of it. Another part was, it kind of, it was, and I put it on this line, because it started as live, work, play. I think Mr. Morgan brought that up. And it was, you know, this is, this is kind of a, you know, this is something that we all talk about, is the expected outcome for Central Issaquah, live, work, play. And then, you know, would you expand it to include and learn, if there's a school component? And so if that is something we all believe is important to the success of Central Issaquah, why doesn't it show up anywhere in this document? And so, so that's why number three is here. And so as we start to get into the, the sub-district conversations, and even as we're into this main kind of intro section, you know, do we need to have some language about schools? And if so, then where are we going to put it? So, so I'm seeing kind of some people kind of nod their heads. You know, if anybody's got some thoughts that they want to share, then let's kind of put them on the table, because I'm taking notes.
So from an outline standpoint, I think urban schools plan is actually key to these neighborhood districts. From a, and to break that down, with public schools, private schools, preschools, daycare, and after-school facilities. And if the majority of this is going to be apartments, like I think it's going to be, then there is an additional need for after-school resources, because you're going to have a lot of kids running around, and where are we going to put those kids? If we don't keep them busy, they're going to become issues. So, and we don't want that. So that's kind of where I was thinking, we need to make sure we have a schools component for each neighborhood, to be able to handle all those kids, living in one confined area. Because they are not going to have backyards. So they're going to be more active, I think, than people who would live in a house.
So I'm, I'm starting to get a little confused as to whether we are supposed to be wordsmithing all the component parts of the vision at this point in time, or, or what? So one thing I would say, in looking at it, we have transportation, which is this big huge bugaboo, and then we have this little thing called other essential services, all in the same paragraph. It seems like transportation is a standalone. And then in these other essential services, whatever they might be, that would include schools and those important components that people need for their essentials for daily living, right? And that, that would make sense. I'm, I'm not sure I'm a fan of the innovation component at the bottom.
We haven't even gotten there yet.
Well, and that's why I was confused. Are we going one by one?
Yeah, it's a little bit, no, no, it's a little bit more free flow than that. So if you want to start on innovation?
No, I don't, I don't care. I, I'll go back to the environment.
How about we do this? Well, or let's finish schools before we.
Can we finish environment? Because we were actually there, and then we popped to schools.
Well, we started with housing, and didn't finish with housing, so.
I thought we were done with housing.
I thought we were done with housing.
I'm trying to, like, I'm trying to move us along.
So the only thing I wanted to say about environment was, protection is a huge component, and that's totally left out of the environmental paragraph, so.
What? It says, protection of wildlife corridors and healthy streams are essential to Central Issaquah.
Integrating environmental features, and wildlife corridors and healthy streams is not the environment. That's a subcomponent of the environment. So that would indicate that you only have to protect those, and the rest you can integrate. So in your verbiage, the hierarchy of language would be not what I would prefer.
All right. I would consider that.
Well, and that's why I would say too, because we're really on a valley floor, and part of the issues that I have with all the parking is, the wetlands have been destroyed. And so I think in our statements is realizing that maybe what we want to do is bring some of it back, because we also have stormwater that we need to worry about, which is part of our infrastructure. So, you know, realizing it's just not the views too, but it's the valley floor and it's the lake that we have to also protect as we grow.
One of the other comments on environment, which I think is where we're, what we're talking about right now, is that the wildlife corridors is potentially vague, and I think that it does refer to riparian areas. I'm a, I'm a former wildlife biologist and have worked professionally in urban settings, and so wildlife corridors could mean more than that, and I recognize that. But I think that for our plan, we are referring to riparian areas. So I would just like to clarify what we mean by that, and it comes up many times, not only in the, this statement, but throughout the document.
I can help just a smidge with that, having read the Parks Plan lately. The Parks Plan has a lot of language on wildlife corridors.
In the, is it referring to in the central area wildlife corridors that are planned?
Wildlife corridors in general, not just in the central area, because the Parks Plan covers the whole town.
And with the wildlife corridors here, you've got to connect to the lake and to the areas where the wildlife are running through. And we have a lot of deer and bear and cougar that actually access the valley floor. And so to help direct them, not just along the narrow streams, maybe provide other ways, safe harbors versus going through the school, might be something that we need to look at. Or cross I-90, have, you know, more things under I-90 where they can go to, so we don't have the cougar killed like we did on I-90. have the cougar killed like we did on Islands not too long ago.
So can you take the environment and separate it into two sections, in the same paragraph, but two sections, and put the natural features and then wildlife separate? So that you have a wonderful statement that covers creeks and natural views and stuff, and then add a specific, more condensed, more, what do I want to say? Inclusive, inclusion, inclusive area of the wildlife? So make it broader so that you have two different distinct things and don't put them together.
So I guess I would say, I could do that. So for me, each paragraph has a certain level of importance, right? So by giving wildlife corridors its own paragraph, it now is at the same level as transportation, which I think we should unpack that a little bit and see if the groups think.
Well, that's what you're doing now. I don't think it has.
I'm actually not. It's, so right now, environment is one thing. And it's like, and I think we can talk about, there's different parts of the environment, and what's the importance of that as part of a successful urban environment is important. I think if you were to create the wildlife corridors as its own topic.
No, I don't, I don't, I'm not thinking that at all. I'm just putting more emphasis into better language for both of them.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think we need to, we're going to rework all of these based on the conversations I think we're hearing this evening. So, okay. Are you ready for innovation? Or did you want to go somewhere else?
Can I add one comment on schools?
Yes.
Since you'd asked about it.
Yeah, I'd like to finish up something.
Yeah, exactly. I like that you've included it, but I question having it listed as a public space. And so suggested maybe just another section in there that just says quality of life risk by promoting environmental sustainability and just somewhere and just say adding neighborhood schools as one of those bullet points within the paragraph. If that makes sense.
So where did you add that, Mel?
Well, just somewhere in there promoting environmental sustainability, you could just say adding neighborhood schools, improving architectural design, integrating development and so forth. Rather than listing it as just a public space.
Yeah.
I like that you've added it.
I question if the schools, as you pointed out, it's in with public spaces, I question if it should go under other essential services and split that out. I think that that might make more sense because also schools are, schools are very important, but also at multiple levels, including potentially private schools. I mean, our vision, I think, means we have after-school facilities, as Ron said, and all of these things. And so I think that that maybe deserves more emphasis in an other essential services section. That might be, that's my suggestion for how to restructure.
I'll throw in, I thought about that same thing and thinking about somewhere to have it, but to me, schools are really critical to a sense of community. So when I thought about, is it just a service we provide? Or do schools create sense of community? I would rather it be shown as a, under that category was my thing.
I would be fine with that, too. I think, though, the point about not having it with plazas and schools, I think it needs its own emphasis.
Are we talking about the sense of community piece right now?
Mm-hmm.
It would be interesting to hear what the Parks Department, what their idea or what their suggestion would be to add into that. You know, so much of this also centers around parks and recreation, you might have a hand in it. So it'd be kind of interesting to hear what they have to say, feedback.
We're meeting with them tomorrow, so we'll have, we can have a conversation with them about that. Right, Trish?
Yes.
All right. Next.
I vote for transportation for three points.
Okay.
Should be by itself.
I heard that already.
With more emphasis on what we're trying to do in transportation.
I'll take buses for four.
Take walking for 16.
Support for pulling transportation out into its own.
Yes.
Yep.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
And I think also non-motorized, I think that the bicycles and other options are getting around. It could be, basically, if you have transportation by itself, which I support, I think then you can expand a little bit on our vision for having less car trips and less single car trips.
Yeah. Okay.
So Kevin, question for you is, we pulled transportation out. Give us an example of other essential services.
You already went there with my head. So I'm going to look to Trish.
Solar, water, broadband, any of those kinds of things, any kind of utilities that are not transportation. All the other things you need.
So should we create a topic of utilities or leave it as essential services?
I'd recommend leaving it as essential public because there might be something new that we haven't even considered yet that just falls under the category of things that you need in your daily life.
Okay, so utilities, what else would be considered essential services?
Police, fire, particularly.
Solar, water, fire protection, fire flow in your water, for the whole, the whole rest of it that the city provides or helps provide.
So you have the criteria essential for daily living. And so when I read that, I read that people have places to get their prescriptions, get their food, get, do their things that are required for daily living. And because I think that sort of point of the Central Issaquah plan is you aren't supposed to have to hop in your car and drive to, you know, two miles away to get everything you need in a day. You should be able to, without doing that, go and at least get your espresso in the morning, right? So what I think, unpacking the idea of exactly what you mean by essential services and what it means by your daily needs is at least a conversation to have so that it can be clear what we're aiming for in that. Because that's sort of, I always read it because I know that's a goal for the Central Issaquah plan, to get there. And if that isn't the sentence that does that, I think we need a sentence that gets us to that success.
And I'll support that because part of, I consider essential services, is a small market. I mean, that you can go down, if you have a smaller place, you're not going to have a great big freezer or refrigerator. So be able to go down and get your groceries locally without having to get in your car and not having to store, you know, a whole pallet of toilet tissue in your apartment.
This might be the first time I've disagreed with Connie on something. This might be the first time I've disagreed with Connie on something. Just, I don't think we're supposed to have a, I know, I kind of like it. I don't think this is about having a store in every neighborhood or every subarea. I don't think economically you can, you're going to have nine TFCs or nine Savways or anything else. I think at some point, it's not about the daily living of where I buy my toilet paper or where I buy my steaks or wherever else. I think it's more essential services than it is having a grocery store in every neighborhood. It's not as much the economic vitality of development as much as the grander scale of where we're going to the city. That's just me.
I think that as the vision, it doesn't actually mandate that we have every component in, it just is that this is our vision and that our vision is that we have the essential services in the central area. And so you don't need to drive to Bellevue, for example, to get your, you know, prescription or whatever it is, that we do have everything that people need for their day-to-day in the central area, but not necessarily within a, you know, within each neighborhood. And I think that, I think that it's fine because it's called out here as the daily services in the section that is general for the whole plan.
Anything else in the guiding principles? You haven't talked about innovation yet. When are you going to, are you going to get there? Trying to keep it moving.
I'm trying to go in a sensible order.
And I'm trying to get you to the end. You notice that, right?
I think innovation, this is not innovation to me. If we're going to be an innovative town, you're looking at different ways of creating energy and different ways of building. And yes, there is some partnerships that you might be able to get at, but it's sort of staying on the cutting edge of the right way to develop an urban city. And this does not, this does not get me to that, and it's redundant. Private partnerships to help the community achieve the Central Issaquah vision, and this is part of the vision, and so now you've just gone around to, I don't know what success is there. So I would probably just get rid of that as a goal unless somebody can figure out some way to be able to figure out how to make that successful. I think this is what the city should be doing and does all the time, so.
Innovative, essential services.
Something like the TOD that, with the multifamily tax exemption. Sorry, oh, thank you. I think that's something that we think is innovative. We're trying to do the pilot project in Central by the transit station with housing, with affordable housing, with multifamily tax and as a pilot. To me, that's sort of the innovative piece. We're trying all these different things right there in the middle of Central, right by the transportation.
You can expand that a little bit. For example, cross-laminated timber is a new building material that enables all kinds of new applications, but we've not had a building in Issaquah built with that before. And so what is the permitting process if you even wanted to use cross-laminated timber? So thinking about things like that. And then we, I think somebody around here talked about microhousing units. That's another innovative approach to housing. It's a product that our community doesn't offer right now, and there may be some demand for that. And so I think there is room for innovation, but more innovative innovation, I get that.
So that just talks about how to get more building done. And I think you need to expand it to technology and things besides that to help the city itself.
So can I take a pulse of the group? Keep innovation or dump it? So keep it?
Keep it.
But just work it a little harder? All right. We'll try and keep it and work it a little harder.
By tomorrow.
By next meeting.
By working it a little harder, that means expanding it so that it can identify different, a different pool of things you can do that are new?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, Dave's going to talk.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
It only took you an hour and a half to get to the mic.
Well, the mention of cross-laminated timber got me going. If you're a UW graduate and you get the Collins Magazine, there's an excellent article in there about it, and it's really something we should be doing.
Yeah, it takes place of steel.
It really has a lot of, unfortunately, we don't have a Western Washington mill. It could be a while before we do, but it really is important to the, our long-term timber industry and those jobs and just the whole thing. It's just the right thing to do. Good. And, yeah, innovation is something that should be in all these categories, so that's kind of that. And it's kind of, the rental ownership of condos or multifamily kinds of things, I got the impression not too many people have been landlords because it's, it is a difficult job to be a landlord, and I'm sure people would love to be building condominiums and hoping to get more. And then the emphasis on school. My daughter teaches on Broad Street. The Broad Street is associated with Wall Street and Public High School and 11th, 12th, and 13th floor building. And the urban schools is something we're going to have to have. And obviously, you don't have your fields and some of those kinds of things, but we're could make, we're closer than some that, I think we really have to think about schools. And there's a lot of frustration in the community that we've been behind on getting school sites. And that really has to come earlier in the process because affordability, for one thing. And just, if you want to get families, you want to get kids, and then all the rest in there, you've got to have a reasonable school thing. And people come to this area, as we know, for schools, and we want that to continue. I guess if they're coming, we want them to have an interest in schools and that they think schools are important.
You can sit there, I'm going to go get two.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, okay. Those are my pitches.
Okay. Woo! All right, second section, the need for change. So, so part of this is, you know, I think as we talked about this, and then we'll get into the conversation from Land and Shore. So the reason why we included this section was we felt like it was important to kind of document why the visions changed, you know, after like five years. Has it been five years, Trish?
Yes.
Thank you. So, so this was, you know, so there was, you know, a few paragraphs in here about why there was a need for change. The comments that came out of Land and Shore, I don't think they completely bought into the need, the need for, the need for change. And so part of it is a conversation with us. Is this, is this, is this just extra words? Or is there some value to this that's worth keeping? You know, I think a recommendation from Councilmember Goodman was maybe there's just a sentence that says, you know, in 2018, the visions were updated following the, you know, the first few projects that were built. And it doesn't necessarily need to be more than that. So this is kind of open field. Let's talk about whether there's value to leaving this in or whether we strip it out and don't talk about it ever again.
I don't think it needs to be in there. This is a vision, the vision plan, and I don't need to know why somebody did something before.
I agree. I think it can be removed, and I think then we have a stronger starting to our vision.
But I do agree to continue on what I was saying before, we do have to have a paragraph or some, something in the beginning to say what, why we're doing this.
We also have a section called reset. So, that one's next. So there is a paragraph on reset. You know, maybe if we need to, we can pull some of the stuff from need for change into the reset paragraph.
Aren't these kind of an appendix items?
No.
Well, we don't really have an appendix. I mean.
Maybe we get out of appendix. I mean, I think the reality is some people may want to know why we've made changes, and other people just want to read the vision that we have move forward.
So my thought on the reset was it seems odd to have a reset without a need for change, right? So, I mean, it flows now, need for change and then reset, and then here's what we're doing, right?
Yep. It tells a story. That's why we call this a story.
That's right, yeah. So maybe if the need for change is going away, maybe we just remove the heading reset. And, I mean, I think the information is important, but it seems a little bit disjunct then without that. It doesn't flow as well. And then you go into the division, into district visions. And then you go into the division, into District Visions. So I guess, that's just my thought, is maybe if the Need for Change goes away, either the Reset also goes away, or maybe there's just, like, I think a recommendation was, a couple of sentences to transition from the vision into the visions.
I disagree again. I've been doing this for 20 years. And if you don't say that you have made something better because you failed in the past, you're gonna do it again. So you darn well better say that you had a problem, this was the problem, and this was the pathway we took to fix it, and this is how we made it better. Because in 10 years, none of us may be at the table, and somebody might do what we already did that didn't work again. I think it's always wise to show that we started with something, and now we've adjusted, and we're trying something new. And that also sets the pathway, knowing that we're gonna have to probably adjust it again because it's nothing, nothing is, is ever perfect, right? And so if you don't create that pathway for the people who were in your seats in 10 years, it's like starting all over again. So we have to show how we've learned.
But do you need it there?
Yes. You need it there because that's setting the stage for the new code. At the very beginning, you say, you know, we had this thing, and now we changed it, and, and this is our better product. And that gives people the sense that, okay, we started out with something. Now, now they'll ask, well, what was it exactly that didn't work before? And you can have a conversation and make a better decision the next time when you have context.
Not, not do you not need it in there, but do you need it there? Do you need it?
Yes, you need it there because otherwise, no one will ever read it. They may not ever read it now, even though it's at the beginning. Because people hate to read. They're just gonna go to the cool-looking tables because they're colorful.
I agree. I mean, I, I agree now. I like the idea.
Okay?
I agree. The thing, though, that I didn't like about the reset was that it called out just the six moratorium items, when my sense is that there's a lot of other things folks think are needed as part of this revisioning. And we're not limiting this vision to just those six things. We're looking at building this vision on the Isaguá they want to build and create. It's not just based on the six moratorium items specifically, it's building the better Isaguá that we want.
I'm in favor of Councilmember Goodman's suggestion, which was to include a very abbreviated version of, this is, it was changed to this date and one sentence of why, and maybe a few, because it has had a few iterations, so there would be a few, and then a few sentences, it was changed on this date, this is why it was changed on this date, this is why. But I, I think that people, I, I think that it's important to document it, but I don't think that it warrants this much documentation. I think that the, the vision guiding principles are, are very important, and to give this much space at the very beginning to this process, I think is not warranted.
Well, we have two very different opinions.
Don't everybody talk at once? You're on.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I've already said it. I basically agree. I think that having a mention of the process is good, but maybe not this much mention. And I, as I said before, I think with, I'm assuming now we're talking about Need for Change and Reset as all together, because I think you can't really have one without the other. So I would just collapse that into something more discreet.
Connie?
Well, if we're talking about the new vision, and we need to tell them why, maybe we need to restructure the order it's posted in, that it should start saying, here's what the problem was.
Yeah, that's what I.
That's what you were saying.
Yeah. Here's the problem was. We looked at it, we reset it, we got these district visions, and then you, then you put your vision. Now here's the vision. And all the stuff that's behind what's printed on this first page, they reverse the order.
I just think it's disjointed the way it is. I mean, you have this great vision statement, and then, then you stop, and, and you don't continue. I think it needs to be in the front, why you did it, why you're doing it, if you wanna put it in there at all. That's my thought.
You're talking about as a preface?
Yeah. It just, it just doesn't work for me where it is, you know?
So, if, if you put it above the planned vision, like in a italicized text, or some, something that looks like it's an introduction, and definitely different as a preface, I think that would be a very, very attractive thing for people to read, and, and that would be good. If it is a simple paragraph that, that looks like it's a part of the main document, I think people would just skip past it. So as long as it is highlighted in some way, I don't have a problem with it being before everything, as long as it's appealing and attractive.
I think the whole thing needs to be appealing and attractive.
It does, but, you know, you've got a lot of.
With nice pictures and drawings and.
Yeah, you have a lot of components fighting each other for what people would read, but as a, in a box, in italics.
In italicized preface.
With a blinking arrow to it. All right. There's been some suggestions for reorganizing this piece and potentially condensing it a bit. So, so let's do that, and we'll look at it in two weeks and see if we think it looks better or not. All right? I think I got the gist of what you guys wanted to do with that.
I think also it, it needs to include more of the original motivations that we discussed for the whole vision, not just the need for the changes, right? So.
I think you should start with that, then add this, and then go into the vision, and you've got it.
Yeah. The, the background for the whole piece is, I think, very important, and then maybe some condensed change.
I know, I know. So, all right, well, let, let me look at that, because remember, this is like, this is like a chapter out of a novel, right? There's the rest of the novel, and then there's this chapter, and we were gonna like, pull the chapter out, play with it, and stick it back in and have it still work with the rest of the, the plan, right? And so that introduction is in the rest of the plan, it's in another chapter. And so let's look at what that looks like to potentially more connect it in with the visions, and, and we'll see what that looks like. So no promises, but we'll definitely do that exercise and go through that before the next meeting.
If it's too condensed, it'll lose its impact. Because people 10 years from now won't have our expertise, and so they're like, what do they mean by that? We don't have enough experience.
That's right. It's because they're all addicted to social media on their Apple phones. All right. I'm gonna roll on, given where we are with time. So, so that was actually six on this list. So now, I think we are to page, unless somebody wants to talk about this section on page two, which was District Visions, Community Conversation, or the Fresh Look. If you guys want.
Does that just stay? One of the, because that seems odd now. Oddly placed without the change in Reset. And I have a nodding from the.
So you, so you think it's, it's flying with the, up to this box with the flashy arrow at the beginning?
I'm not sure. It's, it's pretty hefty.
It is pretty hefty. Okay.
I like it, though, because it's processed, but that's just me showing all the outreach we did.
Right.
That's, might just be me.
What, what if you left it where it was, but also treated it the same as the introduction for the regular vision? Because this is the, it's the little introductory piece for the district visions as compared to the overarching vision?
Okay, so a littler box with italics?
Well, it's more words. I'm just saying, if you, if you're, if you're creating a document and you have symmetry, so you have your little introductory thing before your overarching city vision, and then, this is the update there, then it might be expected that there would be an update to the district vision similar to the overarching vision. And so I think if you were reading it, that might make sense. We updated the big vision, and this is the process to update the small vision. Maybe.
Makes sense.
Maybe.
Okay, we can look at that. I agree, it kind of floats weirdly without the other pieces, so we'll see if it finds a better home. All right, so the next piece is, so now we're into some serious substance. So what we tried to do was, we tried to create kind of four buckets that would be somewhat common to each neighborhood, okay? And I think this, this really didn't work for Land and Shore. You know, at least that was my take. You know, there was a, there was some confusion about whether these things had to happen in each sub-district, or whether they would be, some of these things would happen in, in each district. There was definitely a lot of conversation about sustainable and whether this last box really was sustainability, or whether it was something else. You know, I, I think it is very environmentally focused, but there's also some pieces that are not environment, so I was not quite on board with that comment. So we need to talk about this. So this was a, this was an organizational strategy, I think. It was a way to try and make sure that when we get to each sub-district, that we would think about the same kind of things as far as what would success be. And so it was kind of like an organizing element for me. And so for me, there's value here, because when you get to then each sub-district, you can go back and see if these bullet points are there or not. And so, but if nobody else is feeling that, I guess the question is, is what's the value of this? So we organized each neighborhood similarly with these kind of four buckets in terms of different things within each neighborhood. And I think we're to the point of talking whether that works or not.
I actually like this list. I do think there are pieces in there that don't belong in the category you have them in. But I actually do, this is, this says specifics to me. So what does livable mean? And I think that there's, we should talk about the, this, and, and this should connect to the vision, the, the overall vision, that aspirational vision, because there's a lot in here that actually goes to that vision. So I actually like the, having this, this list.
Blank space. So in, in Land and Shore, there was a conversation about definitions.
Yep.
And I've expressed the same concern. I don't know what livable means, and just having that number of bullet points underneath it seems too tight. I would like a brief definition of what livable is, what distinctive would mean, what connected is, and what sustainable would mean in the context of this chart. And that way, I could sort of extrapolate other bullet points that would fit into the category, because right now, I would be guessing wildly, because I don't really know how you're defining those words. And even if they were just dictionary definitions, I don't know, but some definition, because these are not the only things that are gonna be pertinent. Okay, so I have a theory. If you, instead of using these, if you used your vision header topics, could you use those vision header topics to create this chart? The ones that we just went through that we didn't agree with? Innovative environment, transportation. Is there any way to feed those again into this system so that it would all be linked? I think there's a lot of them, so it seems really awkward, but I thought I would at least pitch it to see if there was a potential.
I think that's an interesting idea. I think that it's very helpful to have buckets. My concern about these buckets, though, is that, for example, transportation is in, obviously, it's in Connected, but it also appears in Livable, and then it appears in Sustainable, just in different forms. So that was my concern. And then to build on the last comment from Connie, I think maybe one way to approach this would be to say, would be to use these. I think they're, I think they are okay, but I think that there's so much overlap that it makes it difficult to actually use these as, as buckets when there is that overlap. So maybe some, some, looking at how the guiding principles fit in and trying to separate them out so that there is more distinction between the different, the different buckets. So does transportation go in Connected and then just leave it in Connected? And everything having to do with transportation then goes in that Connected bucket, for example?
This is where it's easier to start over again.
I was gonna say, we're back to the structured discussion. I mean, I, I agree, I think what, what I'm hearing as well. I'm not quite ready to get rid of the, of the, of the four, but I do think having, you know, better connection between, I mean, I, I think probably the, some of the confusion that Land and Shore and others have had is that, you know, we just go through this list, and we have the, you know, seven or eight, or whatever it is, in the vision, and then we sort of change the language a little bit, start talking about these things. So, I mean, one way would be to do what Connie suggested, which would be to carry those, you know, the keywords from the vision statements through everything. Or if we wanna put it in simpler buckets like this, maybe we, getting back to the visual, or the aesthetic of it, I mean, maybe we, every time one of those words shows up, you know, it's bolded or italicized or something. And that would do two things. It would draw people's attention to it, show them where those statements show up in here, and also would give us just a, a quick check on, did we actually cover everything that we said we were going to, and is there a pretty equal representation? And maybe we need fewer or more buckets. I mean, I like, my, I think my organizing mind likes the, you know, the colors in the boxes, and, and carrying it through to the different neighborhoods, I like the way that shows up. So I don't, I don't know if I've given a definitive recommendation, except to say that I like the organization of it. I would like to see better connectivity between the vision statements and what's here.
So, so a couple pieces. One is, you know, so I think, I don't disagree that a definition or some sort of description, maybe I like description better than definition, is of value in that it then allows you to extrapolate. So I think there's some value to that, and so we can try and see what that looks like. Connecting it to the guiding principles, I think, also makes sense for me, and I'm not sure how to do that yet. But I think, you know, there definitely needs to be some threads going back and forth, because otherwise, you're right, you turn the page, and it's like, hey, whose plan is this? It's completely different than the last one, right? I don't know that I, I'm enamored with trying to create a bucket for each guiding principle, because that seems like a lot of kittens to try and keep track of. The one thing I don't know, I don't disagree with your comment, Vicki, what I don't know is, and I need to think about that more, so I'm just being honest. So I, I get the fact that there's like mobility pieces, you know, in other things than Connected. Because in my mind, like, for example, you know, providing options for daily needs without the use of a private vehicle, that is a transportation thing, but it's very much a sustainability thing. It's that, it's the idea that, you know, you can just walk to go get a groceries or whatever the case is. And so, I mean, I'm gonna probably need to think about that one a little bit more to see if they can be more contained, because obviously, I didn't think that initially, which is why there is spill or spillage. is why there is spill or spillage of the particular guiding principles in different buckets on this page.
So, I think that for me, I mean, you could even make the argument that being connected is part of being livable.
I know.
So I think that the value of the buckets is that they, they allow us to put things in sections and organize our thoughts, and give some predictability to the way the document is laid out. And so, to me, my issue with having very similar, to me anyway, very similar statements in the different buckets is then you lose that value of, of saying, well, if I want to know about the transportation in this neighborhood, I go to the connected section, because it could be in the livable, or it could be in the distinctive, if it's distinctive, or it could be in the sustainable, because it also. So, I think that it, I think that there will be some judgment calls to decide where we put things, but for me, for the predictability of the document, it is really important that we don't have so much double counting.
Okay.
To my, I really like this page a lot, and I think in some ways, we're pretty deep into the weeds, because we are working deep in the weeds in all of this, and from the public's perspective, that when they come to look at this, when I look at it from somebody that, that is out in the public and I look at this, to me, I read these things and I think, these are all great things. I'd love to have all these things in Central Isaguá, throughout the whole city. If they do overlap, I, maybe it's not too bad, because it reinforces the importance of some of those things and why we might have them. If I was somebody from outside and I looked at all this, I'd say, this is great, I like the orders Troy said, it kind of helps sort of box things out and so forth, but the bullet points, they might be redundant with the visions, but I think it's a great statement. I, I really like this, I'd, I'd want to keep this in.
I liked it. It's organized for me. And things aren't always just in one box, so it makes sense to have, have it called out in other boxes for me. But if you like the words, after you create a description of what each one of these words mean, in, in a piece of paper like this, it would be nice to take those four words and put it in the upper echelon statement, that these are the four things that we're going to talk about, and have them in bold, and then you can put them, associate them with each one of these boxes. I think that would make a lot of sense to me.
And maybe saying what Joan just said slightly differently, maybe your definitions in each of those boxes could be your guiding principles, so that then, livable, you would allocate the guiding principles in the, in each of those boxes, and your guiding principles then would be creating the broader definition for what you're talking about. And that would allow you to consolidate it into four from too many guiding principles.
So, I'm not sure what you said, so, okay, it sounds wonderful.
I have, I have one more thing about these particular buckets. I think that I can, economic statements, economic vitality, are particularly, it's particularly hard for me to know, for example, if I wanted to know about the economic vitality vision, I think it would be particularly hard to know where, which bucket that goes into from this.
I guess, if you were to take this sheet of paper and cut it all into strips, so every bullet is a separate strip of paper, mix them all up, and give the people the four deals, they wouldn't necessarily all, unless you told them they had to have exactly the same, you know, seven in each one, or whatever it is. I think we'd see a whole different mix than you see on here, and each person would have a little different mix. They're, they're all great things, but I want to move a bunch of them around.
Affinity diagram, joining affinity, right?
We can do that, I mean, that's what the discussion is tonight, but would you keep the, the boxes as they are? Would you keep those four?
I think the four are great, and I say, I think some of those, if I were to put, distribute them, I must probably have, it wouldn't be exactly an even number in each one. Some, livability would take a whole bunch of them.
There's probably some additional things that we can add, based on what we talked
about in the guiding principles, so. I guess we go back to structure. We've all agreed originally that the structure was fine, so this is the structure. I, I think, does anybody really have a, now that they've looked through everything, have any problem with it? Okay, so, we're gonna keep this.
Yeah.
I like the colors.
Yeah.
I don't know if I picked those colors, but I like colors. So with that, are we gonna delve into what's in here more specifically, or is that gonna be for the next time?
So, like, I think we landed on the vision statement. I mean, I think if you guys want to either reorganize David, or reword some of these things for clarity, I'm gonna do some work on them as well, by providing either a definition or description, and trying to make some connections to the guiding principles. And so we'll, we can all kind of bring ideas, maybe, to the next meeting. So if you guys don't mind doing a little homework, I'd say let's leave y'all to do some, and come back next time and pick it up then.
Can I make a suggestion, Keith?
Yeah, absolutely.
So for each one of the pages, for each one of the four, if, if you guys can go back and, and look at the actions, so terms like work with, work with is, is very soft. You know, what does work with mean? I'll call them, you know, every, once a week? Does it mean I, I just talk to them once? What does that mean? And so it has to be, it has to have some kind of outcome to it. So if, if you guys can go through all of those in the developer obligations and the city implementing actions, and make them actionable, and actionable with actual outcomes, that would be helpful. And in measures of success, actual metrics. So what does safety mean? Does it mean, you know, if somebody's running across the street, five out of 10 times, somebody gets hit, is that good? You know, what does that mean? So, you know, if, if, for all five, all four pages, if, if you can make it so that we actually know what it looks like, what the outcome looks like, and how you're gonna measure it, that would be helpful.
Okay, so now, now we're to the, the squishiest piece. All right, so, I'm gonna go back to the first page. So, okay, here's the thing. So we put this very schematic into our draft as just something to start a conversation, really. This document's in the Plan Now, and this is the one that Lindsay kind of pointed to at, I think it was at Land and Shore. This document here, this, as far as we understand, although our meeting is with Parks Department tomorrow, which is less helpful than if it was today, this, I believe, is the graphic that's coming out as part of the park plan. So, the conversation that Trish and Kristen and I are having with the Park Department tomorrow is green necklace, is, is there a green necklace in here, so that we're all consistently looking and calling things the same? You know, what I can tell you from the conversations I've heard with the park director, you know, one of the biggest pieces of the park plan is what they call this green spine, that runs north-south from basically Squawk Valley Park at the south end, up to Lake Samamish at the north end, and trying to make sure that there's a green connection all the way through the city. So that's one of their biggest things in a north-south direction, an east-west direction, this thing, and I swear I had a nightmare about a snake, and I think this is the only thing that's snake-like that I've seen in a long, in a long time. So, so this is the Mounds to Sound Trail. So this is a regional trail that connects all the way through Isaguá, goes through Bellevue. And the reason why it's kind of fat in the middle, it's not because it swallowed a mouse, it's because they're not exactly sure the alignment and the exact location as it runs through the middle of the city. We're clear on the west end and the east end, but the middle, there's still some variability. So, so, you know, they've got these kind of two linear components to this plan, and there's some nodes. And actually, if you start to look at the nodes here, and look at some of the nodes on our plan, they're actually fairly similar, and you can start to actually get some similarities between those. And, you know, one of the comments about this diagram before was, well, it doesn't represent basically all the other trails and connectivity that's happening in a non-motorized way through our city. And so, I am here to tell you today, I don't know what the answer is to this one. I think you guys all liked having another diagram in the visions, because the green necklace was such an important component for the overall success of Central Isaguá. You know, we kind of went through a little bit of a conversation about, does it make sense to actually have an image? So that when we say green necklace, because right now, the problem was, we were saying green necklace, and everybody was like, I don't even know what that looks like in my head, right? And so it was like, okay, we need, that's a problem, we need to be able to visualize it for people, in theory. And that's what we tried to do. So now, I've got these three images. None of them overly look the same. I think even if you put them all together, I'm not sure you have something that is necessarily understandable. So, I don't know what to do with this, and I'm just gonna be honest about that piece right now. And so, any, any conversation y'all want to have, I am all ears.
When I think of green necklace, I think of something that I do not have to compete with a vehicle. Whether I'm a pedestrian or a cyclist, I don't want cars. And a lot of people who, who live in the city feel like cars represent a safety issue, and so that would keep them from getting on a bicycle, or keep them from actually walking down the pathway, if they have to compete with cars. And if we're gonna have 7,000 people living within a smaller area, then they're gonna need that leisure outlet. So, getting them feeling like they're in a riparian corridor of sorts, the green necklace. So when I look at the, the map down below, I see a lot of streets that I would have to compete with, but I don't actually see green trails. And maybe it's because they don't all exist yet, and I understand, but where are those? And maybe highlighting those in a different color than the others? If you could walk me through that.
I know you talk about the green necklace, but a necklace, you know, could be just a distinction, it doesn't have to be a circle, it doesn't have to, it just has to be connected to all the different areas. So, I mean, I would like a separate page with everything we have, and how it could possibly be connected. It doesn't have to be a circle, it doesn't have to, and it doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be what's gonna end up, but it's just a general idea of what we hope to get, but we can have spokes, as long as it's connected, and that's the main goal of this, is to be connected. Otherwise, I don't know how you're gonna get a, a circle. I mean...
So, I think a circle's figuratively, but a loop, where people could walk around the entire thing if they want to. We're not that big of a city, and so that's only four or five miles, people will do that.
Right.
It'd be a great running path, too.
I think, I think that our plan should definitely reflect the parks plan, and I think that that has a lot of detail that is good, so I would support including that, because that's where they want to go, and this green necklace is about parks, so I think we should align our vision with their vision for the parks. I, I still think that the circle version is too cartoonish, and I, I would, I think that it's nice to show where we want to have connections, so I would advocate for that, but I would like to see it more in the style of the parks, and so maybe some integration of where we want to go, in addition to what there, where there actually are these mountains to sound trails that are outlined there, and kind of mesh with that style, that would be my suggestion. But I, I, again, also really appreciate having a visual in there, and I think that's super important, because otherwise, it's very difficult to know what we're talking about.
Okay, after years and years and years of talking about the green necklace, I hate to say this, but how about if we call it the Green Network?
Thank you.
And get away from the necklace idea, and then we don't have to do the circle and everything? Because I think that's the whole key. The idea for a potential resident downtown is the idea, can I look at a map, like a park map, and see, look at all the different places I can go by walking or by bike, that are all connected to parks, trails, all that? That's what I think we really want to get across to people, and it's a network that I can go through, not just a necklace that goes around something, so. And I would suggest perhaps one full page of what we have currently, that everything is just in green, and it's public spaces, parks, and, and pathways, and bike routes, and then another page that is what we think it's gonna be in 10 or 20 years, whatever the Parks Department is aspirational to for the future vision. The real benefit, I think, is seeing a full page of, like, the bottom left there, when we start to see all the, the green land we have, and connections already, it starts to look really attractive, so. That would be my suggestion, so.
I really like that idea. It's spot on. I couldn't have said it better.
So the original task force that came up with the idea is now content to make a little change, so. You've given us the authority to say network instead of necklace, and I like the idea, I like network better than necklace, anyway, so.
This is the part, I guess, where I, too, have the greatest heartburn or heartache about. I agree, I don't think it was ever designed to be a circle, per se, it was designed to get from one point of the city, natural beauty, to another, so network seems to be more encompassing of that. The thing about green necklace, though, it talks about the necklaces, the jewels, and the natural beauty, not just open space or connections, but it's talking about retaining that natural beauty in the context of the environment that we're in, and we're just talking about a network. I don't think we're talking about that natural beauty that's part of Isaguá, so I want to, it, it seems like, I'm, I'm still stuck, maybe, on this idea of the natural beauty of Isaguá, retaining that, and we're losing something in going from environment, where we talk about the environment, to just a green network. How do we incorporate or ensure that we have that natural beauty that Isaguá is known for, not just circling our city, but retain some of that natural beauty inside CIP? That needs to be retained.
How do you get?
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how we get it, I think we talked about the verbiage and the words needing to retain that, not just as a green network or a green necklace, but what that, what those jewels look like, that we talked about needing to retain it, not just walk from Squawk Mountain to the different mountains.
I, I, I like that, the jewels.
Sorry.
I don't know how you get in a picture, a circle like that, unless you go and you take this park, if you go down this road, this road over here, and you find, so that you can actually get around and make it a circle. So I don't know how you do that.
I, I don't think it was ever meant to be a circle. I, I, sorry if I wasn't clear on that. It was meant, though, to retain the natural beauty that we have and are known for in Isaguá. I, I think that's what I envisioned, is that this was the mechanism by which we would retain that natural beauty, and I think talking about just as a network doesn't say that we want to retain any of that natural beauty in the Valley floor. I want to encompass and ensure that we retain that natural beauty, as well as having a network that allows us to get to different natural beauties.
I don't know when the last time y'all read the Central
I don't know when the last time y'all read the Central Issaquah Plan was, but we are supposed to have verdant landscaping along all of our streetscapes that are going to be now our, our green areas that are occupied by concrete and more density, and that was a requirement of the environmental impact statement to create the Central Issaquah Plan. So, the streetscapes are supposed to be equally green and accommodating for a, for, for walking. In Bellevue, the Parks Department is responsible for their streetscape landscaping to ensure that their new urbanity is connected with the green. The map is not the only piece. That is just a visual. The language, then, that defines what a green network is, which I like, would say that this is the, the labyrinth or the tissue that gets you from park to place to amazing spot in Issaquah. So, you can incorporate that within the language, and you can also use your walking network and then overlay or underlay your parks and trails, so that in the end, you can see how the whole system works, but then you could peel it apart and also see the individual components of the parks, the street network, and the trails. And all together, they create the green network, and I think you can do that with a series of three different maps, maybe four, and language, and I think that that would be much clearer to, to get us to the end result. One last thing, Mountains to Sound Greenway does not have to have only one trail through Issaquah. It could be on either side of the freeway, which makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I guess, this, this map that Parks Department has is pretty interesting. It shows its, its, stresses kinda connecting from the existing city to all the things around it. There's not as many internal connections, which is, so that part of it is not emphasized here. And there's islands, such as your Hillside Park, that has nothing, it's there and not connected to anything, which drives Connie nuts for the reason. But there's, you know, there's, and the point about the Mountains to Sound Greenway Trail, certainly, we would like to see it connect to the state park, but it also should come through the Central Issaquah Plan, and it can merge then over on the north side of I-90 at the Issaquah-Preston Trail. But, yeah, there's gonna be more than, there's gonna be more than one route on that that'll be obvious to, to people wanting to go to different places and connect to the state park, or connect to more of the mountain type ends. I think network is perfect. I think that's what we're after. We're looking at it to be as green as possible, and much more connected in the central area than it shows there, which gets more down to some of these kinds of trails at the bottom left. I think we're, I think we're getting, getting this a lot better, and understanding, by calling it a network, we understand better what we're trying to do with it.
I think that is, that's as far as we wanted to get tonight, so...
Does that give you enough to start creating some...
Oh, yeah.
Maps?
Oh, yeah. So, what I'm gonna try and do is, and so, for Althea's comment earlier, I will dive into the first sub, two sub-districts, to, you know, that was the plan. So, I will go back into this first section, which we called the story. We will update words, put some photos in. I agree with that, Vicky. I think that would be, that was an earlier comment that we just hadn't had a chance to get to yet. And also, start to work on some of the restructuring and edits that we talked about tonight. So, that'll show up as redline. I'll then, we'll also go into the first two neighborhoods and start to work on the wordsmithing a little bit in advance of our next meeting, so that if we get through this re-review, the rearview mirror, and actually have some time to get into the neighborhoods, we'll have, we'll have something to actually talk about that'll be a little bit more productive. Just based on the length of time it took us to get through this, we may need more than two more meetings. So, just putting that on your plate.
And to recap, there are three items of homework that I'll be sending out tomorrow to all of you. The first is to redline the vision, to wordsmith it, and give us suggestions. The second one is the intro that includes the Mountains to Sound and the Cascade Agenda, to, to send that out to everybody, and if there's something you have issues with, or that you'd like to recapture or reorganize or whatever, but just so that you remind yourselves what the whole central plan is all about. And the third one is to send you the boxes, to see if you would reorganize the items in the boxes, or if there's anything that you would wanna do with the boxes. Were there any more?
And you don't email everybody?
No, no, no. Just either do them yourselves and bring them, or if you really can't wait, you can send them to us early, but just send them to staff. Don't send them amongst yourselves.
And when she says staff, just send them to Trish?
That would be me, right.
So, you are gonna send out something through email, or not?
Yes, I'm sending out three homework assignments that I just mentioned.
Okay.
And I hope to do that tomorrow, if, if time allows.
And our goal will be to get you guys something at least a week in advance of the next visions meeting, whenever that might be.
It's the 25th.
The 25th.
Your other special meeting, because they're all special, I know, but the special meeting, I emailed you today, it's the 24th, which is a Wednesday, and that's on the wireless communications, public hearing.
That's the one Dominic just sent out.
Yeah.
Right, but I sent it, I, as soon as we got a quorum, I sent you all that that was the, because I know I'd been asking you about many of the times, when we finally got a quorum. So, thank you all for all the pesky emails I've been sending. Sounds like I might need to find some more meeting times, but we have tons of time.
I'm sorry to potentially slightly delay, but did we, so number nine, there was one more point from Land and Shore, and I just wanna make sure that we maybe briefly address it, or consider that it's been addressed, because I think otherwise, we won't ever get to it in the, in the individual parts.
So, so, I think this one, this one for me is somewhat hinged to the conversation that we need to have on whether or not the visions are kind of regulatory, or whether they're really just aspirational, they're separate code.
Okay, so would we discuss that at a, at a future meeting?
We will.
Okay.
Yeah, well, depending on what the timing looks like, you know, this conversation about the intro might be another whole meeting, which then we can talk about that piece as part of that. So, let's look and see what this looks like next, but we need to dial that up. So, I didn't forget about it, but it depends, I think, is the answer.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't closing out this, and then, because that, I think, is important.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Anything else for the, for the order? I will see some of you back here tomorrow night to talk about...
Talk about...
Safe injection sites.
Safe injection sites.
And visions.
And the docket.
And the ComPlan docket.
The ComPlan docket. No, no visions till next week.
Okay. So, with that, I wanna thank...
And the task force and the public are welcome tomorrow, in case you're interested in those topics.
Or anybody else in the worldwide variety of area that we have here in Issaquah. But I do wanna thank you all for, I think that we made some good progress. I think it's gonna be a lot better, and I think the council will be a lot happier from, from what we did. So, thank you all, and with that, I'll close the meeting at 9:02.
Thank you.